The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's been a few months since I've seen you. Today I have an updated fiscal plan for you. It's kind of a precursor to what I see kind of coming in the next budget season. It includes the 2021 actual revenues and expenditures. It includes the current budgets that you approved last fall, plus any additional appropriations to date. It also now includes the year 2025 as a forecasted year. I did meet with Rob and Jeff and Sheena earlier this week and talked about some things that might be in the works in terms of planning for some road projects and maybe reallocating some of our general fund expenditures. That is not in here yet, and we're not quite far enough along with that conversation to know how to fold that in yet. So just be aware that we've had the conversation. I'm aware of some of the things that are being discussed for road funding, but that has not been incorporated in here. But I will touch on some of the highlights. One thing I was really hopeful to have before I came here today, and I told Rob that I thought I would have this before now, is the supplemental lit distribution. That is normally certified in early, no later than early May, and that date has come and gone, and I still don't have that information. In many years, I'm actually able to get that data in February and sometimes March. But this year, I've been working with David Bottar with County Associations as well, trying to get this data. And we're not sure why it's not being released yet. And so the state was supposed to certify the total amount for the county by May 2nd. That has not happened, and the DLGF has until May 14th to certify the allocation of any special lit distribution. And that's very important because that's going to be based on what we actually collected in lit dollars in 2020. And I'll focus on that a little bit later. But I wanted you to be aware of that. Normally, when I would have presented this to you this time of the year, that would have been incorporated in here. And I would have had a little better handle on the lit forecast going forward. And so right now, we're still dealing with an assumption of what was collected in the calendar year 2020. And that sounds like, and it is a long time ago, right? But I don't have that data in here yet. So I'll highlight on that, talk about a little more detail a little bit later, if I wouldn't be aware of that. I'm gonna start on page 25 and talk about property tax. You've heard me use this term before. It's been in play for a number of years now. This is what's called the six-year non-farm personal income factor. And this is the factor that is used to calculate how much property tax you're going to be able to collect for your operating fund each year. And so that fact factor, the last known factor is 1.043, which is actually the factor used for the 2022 budget. We don't know the 2023 amount. Usually, I don't know that till the end of June anyway. But I would anticipate that that's going to remain stable. Now, what you might recall, last fall, yeah, last fall, that I mentioned that you might be qualifying for a growth appeal because your assessed valuation is growing fast enough that it may make an opportunity for you to appeal this factor. We don't know that yet either, but I built it in here because I think you will qualify. And I'll show you that amount in a moment. But this factor, if you're, if your assessed valuation of the county, and this isn't just the counties, this applies to other units of government as well. If your, if your assessed valuation is growing faster than 2% of the, than the state is growing, and your growth is higher than this factor, you qualify for an appeal for the difference in that. And I am anticipating that that will happen for your 2023 budget. And beyond that, to be real frank, I think you'll qualify for a few years. We haven't had to do that for a while. We have over the years appealed our maximum levy for different things, but we've not qualified for our growth appeal for quite some time. But our growth in assessed valuation last year was substantial, and that's kicking in. So anyway, so the base number is this 1.042, the forecasting for 22. But if you go to page 24, one page back, this is the historical information of your assessed valuation. And last year, 21 pay 2022, we saw an increase of 9.64%, and that was substantial. In the year before, we, I was actually thrilled with it 7.3 because we had been seeing in that 4% and 5% range in those previous years. So when you look at the 2023 column, I am, I have been using 5% conservatively. Now, I apologize, I don't know this. Have the notices of assessment gone out here yet? They have gone out. Has there been any indication of increases? I mean, people see in substantial increases?
Yeah, I can tell you, mine was not 5%, it was like almost 30%.
Yeah.
So, and that was crazy, I was gonna ask, when we talked about total county assessed valuation, is that referring to what we see on our individual increases in evaluation?
A lot of it will. And so I want to spend a little time on this. So this 5% has just been a conservative number. But I'm hearing this not just here in Hamilton County. I spoke with the county assessor there. And, and I've talked to some former school board members. I'll just, not to personalize this, mine went up 7.1%. And I thought, well, that's probably about right. But then I started talking to others. I heard a 37%. I heard a 26%, I heard another 7%. On average, I was hearing about 15% increases. And so those are starting to come out, and and it is really reflecting market value, right? I mean, it's not necessarily wrong. But I do, so I see a purpose, perfect storm brewing because if people see these large increases in their tax bill because of the assessment going up so much, what will happen is for those that mortgage their taxes, they will have been, they will be short 15%. Let's say hypothetically, went up 15%. When they, Rob, you know this, when hypothetically, they'll get to spring next year when the tax bills do, and the escrow is going to be 15% short because the bank will not have escrow that high. And the bank will also escrow another 15% for where they think the taxes should be. And to some, that could feel like a 30% increase in their taxes. And what I'm concerned about is the potential of a recession and that hitting all at the same time. From the county assessor in Hamilton County shared with me that one taxpayer had already emailed the leader of the House, you know, the legislators in the county. And so I'm guessing this could end up in some legislative adjustment later. I don't, I have no idea what that will look like. But I feel kind of a perfect storm brewing there in terms of increases in tax bills hitting in 2023. So, but hypothetically, if we keep our tax rate flat in your tax, your assessment goes up 15%, your, your taxes will go up 15% unless tax rates come down. Okay, so in the past, we've always managed the tax rate. We've always tried to maintain a flat tax rate. But that will, might be something that you might wrestle with or, you know, as everything I've built around is a 5%. I've not accounted for 15%, but that might be something that we see and actually might want to decrease the tax rate some to try and mitigate that. We will know the assessed valuation before we adopt the budget. And so this is nothing you have to decide now. But I just want you to be aware that this, we're seeing, or I'm hearing and seeing valuations increasing quite a bit coming up. What that will do, let's, let's say if the county did go up 15% as an average, that's going to kick that appeal up, right? That raises your three-year average even farther, which qualifies you for more general fund dollars, which is good for you in terms of getting more dollars for, for projects. But maybe not necessarily for the taxpayer because they'll feel a bigger increase from that. So, so anyway, I just wanted to point that out that I've not built that kind of increase in yet. I'm still using a conservative assumption as we size the bond issue this year. You know, trying to maintain that flat tax rate, I was using the assumption of 5%. So if the AV comes in much higher than that, it would drop that bond rate down. If that makes sense. And you don't have to appeal. Okay, that's not a requirement. But I would tell you, that would not be where we'd want to cut back because you don't get the opportunity to go back and get it later. So you need, you'd want to take advantage of it, even if you take advantage of it and qualify and use it for debt. You could use it to help pay the bond. That also draws lit dollars with it, keeps your percentage of the lit pool higher for the county unit. General fund dollars are part of that lit calculation when you're trying to determine the county's portion of the lit pie. And so debt does not, that does not go into that calculation. Any debt issued after July 1, 2005, no longer part of that lit allocation. So I would, if we were to that point, we're not to that point yet, that we would have to ask you to approve and appeal a resolution to appeal the, the maximum levy. And then through the auditor's office, we would file that paperwork. Again, nothing you have to decide today. That will be at budget time again. Today's just kind of general conversations about what I kind of see coming down the pike here. So.
So the trigger is at budget time or part of the budget?
Budget time. So there'll be a couple of opportunities. I usually come in before you start reviewing the department budgets and give you an updated fiscal plan. That kind of is the kickoff to that conversation, but then we don't adopt till much later. We actually hold a public hearing and then adopt. It's the adoption, which I believe Amy was in October this last year. Yeah, so probably run a similar cycle in terms of our timing of our budget process. There's been nothing legislatively changed that would affect that. So it probably looks similar to this last year. And so it would be at that point, you would need to decide on tax rates. Although, when I, you do have to decide on the appeal before October 19th. Okay, so that, so if we might, depending on the calendar, I have to go look and see how this one's going to lay out. But if adoption happens to fall after October 19th, we would need you to approve the appeal prior to that. And sometimes some of my clients have done that during the public hearing. That does not, the appeal does not have to be adopted on the same date as the budget adoption. If that makes sense. But I'll guide you through that. That won't be something you have to remember. That'll be something, Amy, we will have to advertise on Form 3. There's a specific column on the Form 3 to advertise for an appeal. And if we don't do that, that doesn't get a, that doesn't get approved then. So a couple of little legal things we got to get through for that. Yes. Okay, the adoption. Yeah. Okay. Well, that would work out just fine then.
My quick question before we leave page 24, the assessed value figure, figures. This is, this is for real property located in the unincorporated area of the county or is it all, it's all county?
This is, this is county. Yeah, this is, this would be commercial, industrial, residential. But it includes all assessments through, for the accept TIPS. This does not, this is net of any TIF districts. TIPS are deducted for them to get to the net assessed valuation.
Thank you. And then how are we notified of the, of the new number or are we?
The assessment?
Yes.
The, the assessor's office will finalize all the assessments and then it's turned over to the auditor's office and then usually by August will know the net assessed valuation for 2023 for the 24, for the 23 budget. So that's not done at the state level. That will be done here locally. So it'll be interesting to see how this, all these different valuations play out. So what's that mean in terms of dollars? If you go to page 26? I would anticipate, if, if, I would anticipate that if you look at the 2023 column on page 26 and slide down, you see a new number, 298,000 there. That's my estimate as of this moment. I don't have the six-year non-farm personal income factor. Once we know that, that number becomes a little more fine-tuned, but it's about $300,000 in property tax levy. That also, as I mentioned, then becomes a permanent part of your maximum levy going forward. So you don't lose that. It becomes part of the next years, and then you can see the next two years after that, that I'm anticipating that you would qualify for an appeal. And so especially with, with the increases that we're seeing. That's where legislators might step in. They might say, hey, we're getting abnormal increases in assessments or revise the appeal language. Now, they, they're not going to do that for 2023. Their session's closed for that. But they could step in and say, because of these circumstances, we're not going to allow you to appeal unless you're more than 4% of the statewide growth. Who knows? You know, but they, they could change the appeal language on, on that.
That number, the 298 number?
Yes.
That's dollars. It's, I mean, that's all that is, the fact that I'm paying 32% more, they're only going to get 298,000. I'm going to get 298,000.
Correct. There's a maximum levy. So that maximum levy is fixed. And so sometimes it's a reallocation of who's paying. If you go up 37%, somebody else only goes up 5%. Tax rate may go down. It's sometimes just a reallocation of who's paying the tax, then always mean 30%, 30% more money because that's controlled with a maximum levy. What's not controlled is the debt. You have an opportunity to issue debt that's, that could cause that rate to go, go up. We've always managed a flat tax rate because assessed valuation is not always going up that high. And I think some people, if you see 7% increases, I think most people would go, yeah, that's, that's what's happening with inflation, right? Inflation's between 7 and 8%. And so people can kind of relate to that. What they can't relate to is the 30% increases. So that's where people will start to get a little more anxious. So we've been able to manage that for a while now, you know, right? We're, we're, we're in a really unusual time again. I mean, right now, everything, the money's okay, right? But we could be in a recession a year from now. You know, there's a lot of people speculating that the stock market was way off again today. You know, it's just flipping and flopping around out there. So it's, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where all this is heading. Real estate values, you know, there's still a, a supply issue, you know? I had a, I had a demographer that I used at the school when I was there. And he always said, you know, my, my student forecast is based on the assumption that 30-year mortgages will remain 5% or below. When they're at that level, people will move around and buy. Once you start getting interest rates higher than that, people think about it a little harder or certainly because of the values of home, and then you start raising the interest rate on it, you know, that has a pretty substantial impact. So will, will it slow down housing? Obviously, they're raising rates, slow down some, I would think. But when that happens, I don't know, there's a, there's just a lot going on with that. So I hope it's not 08, you know, we have the crash of real estate, you know, of real estate values. Okay, page 40. We're talking about local option income tax, then I'll get into the individual funds. So on the far left there, if you don't mind, I'll stand up here. On the far left, you'll see a column that's labeled collections. And the number I had hoped to have before I walked in here is the 2020 number. That, so that 2020 number, that 54 million, 59,000 is a forecasted number. And that number's important. This column's actually the most important because it's the real collection number. The budget number we get is just, just that. It's a budget number. We use it. We get the revenue from it. But they always reconcile against this calendar year number. And if they under distributed, under distributed to you in that budget number, they will make it up with this supplemental lit distribution. And so it was that number that I don't have for you today. Countywide, if my number is right, countywide, that would generate a supplemental lit distribution around $7 million. That's countywide. Everybody participates. It's a piece of that. Last year, it was $8 million. But the most important part is getting that number right in collections. And I can tell you, I personally lived through three errors here. I mean, I, this has been difficult for them in the past. The last one was 2012, and legislators got involved and they are, they've been going through a modernization of their computer system. And so I don't know why we don't have this information yet. I just don't know if it's that, they're so busy that they've not been able to get to it. Or is the news bad? And they're delaying the information that they're giving us? You would think if it was good, they'd be out with it right away. And so that's, that's glass half empty for me. Sorry. That's just, I'm anxious about that. The number that, if you slide over a couple of columns where it says certified distribution, the last number obviously is 2022, and that number was down 1.3%. So, but that's a timing. Some of that's timing issue. You probably, you might recall me talking about this last year. So when the pandemic hit, the federal government stepped in and said, we're going to delay the deadline for filing returns from April 15th to July 15th. Our state followed suit. But our distribution that certified to the county is based on a July 1 number through, through June 30th. And that was pushing a large amount of money out of our distribution. So our distribution would have fallen dramatically had the governor not written an executive order saying, hey, we're going to go ahead and capture that in that distribution. But what they actually did, they didn't stop there. They went for 14 months. So normally, when they certify that number, it's a 12-month number. That particular year, that reflected 14 months of collections. Last year for 20, when I say last year, meaning for 22, we went back to 10 months because they were trying to get us back on cycle. So the pandemic year was from July 1, past the next July 1, past August and September. But then we only had 10 months to the next stopping point, right? So we went 12 months, 14 months, 10 months. Now, next year for 23's budget, we're going to be back on cycle with 12 months, a normal year. So I am anticipating a larger increase than normal. When you see that in 2023, I'm forecasting 7.4% increase. And that's because I'm taking normal growth in, in income and then layering on those two months that we should be making back up again. So, and then you see it normalized again shortly thereafter. Now, this will also depend on wages, right? I mean, inflation's up, people are going to need larger salary increases. And so but 2020 is still the year that has that, the bulk of that pandemic built into it. And so that's, that's going to be an important part. So I apologize. I was very, very, I thought I would have it for today, and I checked this afternoon at 1 o'clock and it still was not live. David Bottar, as I said, has been checking and communicating with the state agencies, and we just haven't got the number released yet. So that is something I'm going to have to update it here beyond, after, beyond tonight's presentation. So.
Mike, I have one, one question before you go on. When do you start factoring in inflation into these future numbers?
Right. So that will be somewhat dependent on payrolls. And so I'm not sure how to build that in yet. So when we get the 2000, when we get the next number for the six-year non-farm personal income factor, that will, that's federal government data for 2021. We don't know the 2021 number yet. That might indicate to us something, you know, what those payrolls are doing. So that would be June when I would see that data. While we're on raises, I have 3% built in here. That may not be enough, you know? You know, I don't know what you're thinking on raises, but kind of keep in mind in a normal year, if you're getting 4.3% increase in your property tax levy, that's going at 4.3% and inflation's in check, that's a pretty good raise. But now levies, if the property tax levy is only going up 4%, and people are needing 7%, 8% to keep up with inflation, those, that's where you're going to start to feel the pinch of the recession, not recession, excuse me, the pinch of inflation on the county's numbers. So, you know, the county employees are going to be trying to keep up with, with inflation as well. And as a general, what I've been kind of hearing, I mean, nothing has been set yet. But just some of the clients I've worked with and just talking to others, I've been hearing around the 4% range. That won't take care of 7% and 8% inflation. But that's just kind of what I've been hearing, and much of that will depend on this lit information. We kind of, we have a pretty good handle what the property tax number is. The lit number, yeah, it's still a wild card here. So did I answer your question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's, no, that's absolutely fine. Absolutely. Okay, what all that means then, that the good news is you're in a very strong cash position to begin to weather what might happen. And that's what you prepare for. You prepare cash balances, rainy day for the downturns because we've been through them before. So we're going to page one. This is the general fund summary for the last five years going back to 2017. And the most important line on here, if you look on the far left and slide down, where it says excess deficit revenues over expenditures. That tells you how much revenue or expense, how much revenue you've had over your expense. And so we had a very good year this last year. We, we gained, when you look at 2021, we gained $3,491,000 in our cash position in, in that year. That's, that's $20 million that we ended 21 with. I would tell you, and you've heard me use this before, this is not a formal policy, although you could make it a formal policy. A policy, I've always said, if you, this is a quick snapshot. If you had 50% of your next year's property tax collections in cash, that would be a good cash balance. The auditor's office is not trying to do interfund loans. They have enough cash to begin the year to get them to settlements, and they don't run into cash flow issues. So that would be about $8.2 million. And right now, we're at $20 million. So we're in a good cash position going forward. You look at this year's budget, it's pretty much in balance. And it is encouraging to see that we're, you know, early indicators that we're in balance in those out years. But again, that'll depend on the lit data I get and/or whether we qualify for that $300,000 appeal. That appeal, as I pointed out, is cumulative, right? So that builds on each other each year, and it also starts pulling those lit dollars with it. So if those don't happen, that impacts the forecast. But if you look at, if you look on the revenue, slide over to the left and you see lit regular and slide over to 2022, you can see that they certified 13,964 for the county. And that was down from the previous year of 14,143. You can see in 23 that I'm forecasting that to go back up to about 15 million. So that's a pretty big increase from one year to the next. But again, we're getting away from the timing cycle issue, the timing issues that we've been dealing with. And that should be a new norm going forward. It, this, if you recall, this does reflect the budget that you approved and the Um it, this, if you recall, this does reflect the budget that you approved and the expenses that you did move out of here. Uh to the jail lit fund. Which uh expenses beyond the payment right now are about a million four sixty-six. That we had moved out of here. Uh so that's also obviously creating cash. Is what, if we didn't, if we didn't have moved those, this, the budget would be out of bounds. That makes sense. Any questions about the general fund? So we did good. Um one thing to think about. Uh there's a couple of negative numbers down here at the bottom where we transferred out three million dollars and three and a half million dollars. That was to the rainy day fund. That would, you know, you can transfer any time of the year if you want to move some more of this. General fund cash and park it in, in the rainy day fund. I did speak with the treasurer. She was looking at how to invest, whether we should take some things out longer. And we wanted to have this conversation with you before to see, you know, are we going to obligate some of this general fund cash? For projects, you know, can't get too, too far out with our investments if we're gonna use some of this cash. Or if we're gonna park it in rainy day fund. Um so. Something to think about is you can transfer. Between now and two thousand twenty-four, up to fifteen percent of the total budget. To the rainy day fund. That's a pretty big number for you. If you wanted to transfer more money out of here to the rainy day fund. Uh to just to park it, I'm gonna talk about the rainy day fund here in a minute anyway. But uh we have more than sufficient cash here right now. To a cash flow between tax settlements for the auditor's office. Although this will, this cash will also start generating, you know, interest rates have climbed, been climbing, been climbing on houses, but the investment. Has, the investment rate's also been climbing, so that. With this cash, you know, we'll start to generate more interest income too, which I've got a very conservative number in here right now. Any questions about the general fund before we move on?
On um, on the, on that page, the, the line item for inflation adjustments that you have. The, the six hundred and one and, and for twenty twenty-three, what was the assumption there?
Three percent.
Thirty percent. So that is the three percent that I saw in the assumption page in the back. It's not. It's not in the base pay. It's, it's in the inflation adjustment. Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Yes. So what I do is you'll see that, that. I add that, it becomes compound the going forward, but I, I isolate that with that cost, that three percent cost is.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next page, page two. Um this is not a huge deal, but it's the first year in a number of years we actually spent more than we took in. Uh to the tune of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. We have more than sufficient cash in this fund. That's not a big concern. But that did happen. Our budget is out of bounds by two hundred and eighteen thousand this year. This assumes if they spend one hundred percent. Of that, which they would not typically do one hundred percent. But, you know, there is a, you know, there is enough cash that you could go for a period of time here. And not have any issues, but. Obviously, if it continued on a regular basis, this is, consider this part of your general fund, because this shares the general fund. It shares the maximum levy. If we had to put more dollars in here, it would come from the general fund. Right now, we don't have to, because we've got more than sufficient cash. But um. If that trend continued where we continue to spend more than what it generates, then we'd have to address it with. Pulling more dollars into this fund or moving expense to the general fund, so. We're gonna skip ahead a few pages. I'm gonna go to page five. Animal control, there's, this isn't big, but as I remind you every year. Animal control, even though it has its own separate tax rate. It shares the maximum levy. So think of this one as a general fund department, even though it's got its own separate rate. Um we, we ended the year two thousand twenty-one with four hundred thirteen thousand. Fifty percent of the next year's property tax, three hundred and sixty. So we're a little bit above. Uh the necessary cash, not a huge amount, but we're a little above the cash flow that. You'd want to see in here. There has been a time where this has dropped too low. We have had to do some interfund loans. Uh we could get this cash out of here by simply lowering the levy each year. And moving it back to the general fund, then raising it again. We've done that before with health. With the health fund where we just lowered the levy one art year artificially. Because the cash got to be too much and then ended up back in the general fund. So that's a bit of a shell game, but. Uh but in this case, yeah, we're, we're slightly above that fifty percent number. Page six. Uh there was no activity in the rainy day fund in two thousand twenty-one. We. Ended the year with six point five million, the same as we started the year. But this would be a place if you'd want to think about moving some of your general fund cash. You could always use this for cash flow, like interfund loans back to something. And you could write the resolution such that you could use it on any purpose, so you don't tie this down. I'd be cautious about that. I've actually seen some people do that. They wrote it real, real tight. What that rainy day money could be used for, and then they couldn't get it out. You know, that they wrote it so tight they couldn't get it out. But if you write it kind of general, like it, Sheena, if you had questions about that, I can share some other samples. That you keep it broad enough that you can always get to it.
Mike, in that scenario, did, did they have to correct that issue by? We, like, amending the resolution to?
Yeah, they had to go back and re, re, readdress how, what the rainy day fund could be used for. So you always still control it by the appropriation process. If that makes sense. So I mean, it's not like if you put it in there, anybody can spend it unless you appropriate it. So you still, the council still has control over that fund. It's just, don't write it so tight that it can only be used for this. So then you might find yourself trying to undo it later and trying to explain it. Got it.
Thank you.
Uh page seven is the highway fund. This one looks bad. It was in balance at the beginning of the year. You've done some additional appropriations out of here. And so when you, we actually gained cash in twenty-one of a million four, almost a million four. Um the budget's out of bounds by three million one because of the additional appropriations, but it wasn't balanced. Still has strong cash bounds, you know, if you didn't do any more, you're still gonna end the year two million four fifty-four here. So um, that's not a concern because you had a substantial cash balance. So it's not surprising that you are spending this down on capital because of the, obviously you got lots of road needs. Um I wouldn't, this, this revenue is very conservative. We used what the state told us last year. But um I've been seeing this trend much higher. Than what uh they told us last year at budget time, so. I'll revise, by the way, this revenue all get revised based on what we collect for the first half of the year. That's from another line. When we get through June thirtieth, I begin updating all the revenues for the first half of the year, actual. Reforecasting the last half of the year and then reforecasting the next years again. So I haven't changed this number yet because we haven't gone through six months of the year. But I think that you're gonna see that this number is gonna be higher when we get ready to do the budget next year because. This is my experience in coming down here. Everybody's still driving, even though the gas is at five dollars. So even though it's painful at the pump, um it is still a. Still a lot of people traveling out there. Um so anyway, um not a lot to say here. We, again, we gained cash, we gained cash at the beginning of the year and. And um. We're gonna go through some cash issue, it looks like, but. We got cash to reserve, reserve for the end of the year. Skip page eight, that's the old wheel tax fund, we'll move that into the highway fund. By the way, that's restricted and, and the highway fund is restricted, unrestricted funding. I've just merged them together. For, for ease. Uh page nine. Is the local road and the streets fund. Uh we were again in balance in this fund. We've done some additional appropriations. Even beyond all that, I'm still anticipating that you'd end the year with two million dollars. And this too, I would think the revenue number you're gonna see go up. Just looking at oh twenty-one, we collected a million five, so a million four oh seven is probably conservative. So we use the guidelines with the state had provided this last year when we did make these estimates. But uh the, the actual receipts are just coming in stronger. Uh page ten is the cumulative bridge. Now, something to think about here, uh this, this has been a rate-driven fund. We have kept the rate point zero zero eight two. And this levy comes from the general fund. In other words, the maximum levy. This is part of that. If we, I, I'm not saying you, you do or don't want to do this, but. This year's revenue jumped by ten percent because our assess valuation jumped. This is a rate-driven fund, so it jumped. So it actually pulled more dollars away from the general fund than what you received. You'd gotten four point three percent in a total levy increase. But this fund got almost ten percent more because it was a rate-driven fund. Now, if we see some crazy number like fifteen percent increase in the AV. Next year, do you want to lower this rate? Do you not want to lower this rate? It's pulling away from the general fund. If, if we get fifteen percent, my number's gonna be really low and. It's gonna pull more dollars from the general fund, because I'm only using a five percent increase in here. That makes sense. So think of this as a department in the general fund.
Yeah, and if the, these scenarios happen where they, they do come in fifteen percent or whatever, uh. Can you give us like an if then scenario, like if it comes in at fifteen then?
Oh, absolutely.
We can do this, we can do that.
Absolutely. Yeah, when we, when we get the real number in August, that will be part of the conversation when we do the budget. I'm just kinda throwing some of these things out now, so it's on, kind of on your radar when we get to that. I don't want to surprise you with it then. Um so, but because it's a rate-driven fund, whatever the assess valuation does, it's going up in revenue and it's pulling away from the general fund. Um this, this uh also had some additional appropriations in it, so it's out of balance right now, but. Still has more than sufficient cash in this fund. Um so a couple million, twenty, two point two million dollars anticipated by the end of twenty-two, unless you do more additional appropriations. Page eleven is the health fund. Uh this too is much like the animal control fund. It's got its own separate rate and levy. But think of this as a department in the general fund. And so uh we've only put enough revenue in this fund in the past to uh balance it. Um it's, it ended the year gained a hundred and forty-five, hundred forty-six thousand dollars in twenty-one. Um you only really need about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash in this fund, so. This is one of these funds that, that we did actually go back to seventeen. If you look at seventeen, you see where we dropped the levy. And the revenue, we dropped the levy back to three hundred and some thousand. Property taxes. And we essentially by dropping that lead, we had to bring it back the next year, but that money just essentially moved right back to the general fund. But you would not necessarily need as much cash. It's in here right now. Uh you skip page twelve, page thirteen is the cumulative capital development fund. So um this is a rate-driven fund. And uh we saw our levy go up. Almost ten percent. It went up based on the assess valuation. Right now I have five percent, but if this one. If, again, because it's rate-driven. Now, this one doesn't affect the general fund. Does not affect the general fund. This has got its own separate rate. It would generate if it, if fifteen, if fifteen percent's the number. And again, I, I have no idea if it's gonna be fifteen percent. I'm just using that as the example. But um it would go at fifteen percent. So this fund, you probably would not want to reduce the rate because this one does participate in the lit distribution. So this levy gets included as part of that calculation. So. Um we, we spent a little cash last year, two thousand twenty-one. We also encumbered about seven hundred thousand of that cash that we had at the end of the year. But uh you're still, if you spend everything this year in twenty-two, you'll start at four point six million dollars. In the uh CCD fund, which is a good, strong cash balance for, for capitals uh improvements. Nice, skip page fourteen, page fifteen. This is, we're down to one geo bond fund. We've just been recycling this one. Now it's working much better. This assumes the new, the new bond issue is being considered. Uh and that's increasing the payment by one million dollars in two thousand twenty-three and. Keeping the payment at three point five million dollars in two thousand twenty-four. This translates into no rate increase. Okay. Um what I got based on the five percent increase in AV. Okay, so if the AV comes in a lot higher, it will actually drop the rate in this fund. Because this is, this rate is based on what the payment's going to be, not necessarily the rate. And so we would probably see a decrease in this rate because we've, we sized the, the uh. Bond off of the anticipated five percent increase, which was conservative. Now, nothing's planned out in twenty-five. We're not that far out there yet, so you don't have any bonds. So that's why we keep doing this, because you don't have any bonds to pay out there. And if your rate would drop if we didn't keep issuing those short-term geo bonds. Um let's see, skip a couple pages, page eighteen. Um this is, this is, this is the one that's not been revised for any recent conversations. This is the lit fund where we're paying our jail bond from. And you can see what we actually paid in two thousand twenty and twenty-one. We actually didn't pay it all out of here. We actually had some. Unspent proceeds we were using to, at first. Now those will be gone. And then we have payments that go out through two thousand twenty-five and then. And then it will drop back. That, that will be paid off. Uh then you can also see the other services and charges in here at the million four sixty-six. Which is the expense that was moved into this fund. And I have accounted for three percent increases in there. So um we finished, this isn't a surprise, because I'm, I'm, you've, you've shared that spreadsheet, right? That, that we ended the year with twelve million four sixty-eight in this fund, so there's quite a bit of cash available here. But this is the conversation where you could move some more general fund expense over here to use this cash and build up cash. To be used on something else. We'll, we'll wait and see how this plays out. Page nineteen. Right now. Um the budget's out of bounds, two thirty-six, two hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. It didn't, it's not ended up negative for the last three years. Um so it depends, depends whether we spend the whole budget on this or not, but if we did spend the whole budget. This budget's out of balance. So if, if we did continue spending at this rate, this is expense we'd have to move somewhere. So just keep that in mind that if we uh, if we really do actually use the personnel budget in here like we have. Uh we would be out of balance going forward and would have to address it, because you can see what's happening in the cash by two thousand twenty-five. Uh depletes pretty quickly. Uh page twenties and old page, uh page twenty-one, I'm just about done. Um page twenty-one is the food and beverage fund. We had a really good year at the end of twenty-one, and the main reason is we had budgeted for health insurance out of here that we did not end up paying out of here. We had approximately five hundred seventy some thousand dollars that we budgeted health insurance in that we did not pay. And so that cash balance did jump up to a million seven eighty in this fund. This year's budget's pretty much in balance. I think the revenue estimate's probably low. Um I, from what I've experienced or seen in other units of government, is that revenue is still coming in very strong. My best advice is, is give as many Chick Fillets as you can, and I guess. Those lines just don't go away. And you'd be shocked how much those Chick Fillets actually bring in and one percent revenue. And I'm not exaggerating. You got a client that it's amazing, it's like the number one, even with the fancy restaurants, like the number one.
She did share with us that it was appeared to be moving faster than what you're predicting.
What's that? The, the food and beverage?
Yeah, yes. It was coming in at a higher rate.
It is coming in higher rate. Not, well, yeah, and again, I'll be updating this for the first half of the year. Once we get to past June thirtieth, I'll pick this again. But uh so what I have in here is probably a little low right now. But also food prices, right? What's driving this up to? Food prices are up. And so food price, when you got the percent on the food price. It's not just people eating out more, it's food prices are higher. One percent from a higher number generates more money. So. Uh page twenty-two, and I'm gonna talk about tax rates and I'll wrap it up. Um this is. This is, this is the combined general fund and food and beverage fund. It no longer, it does include the old gadget fund. When we had to put gadget out separately, but really it represents going forward, just food and beverage and general fund. But when you look at the overall cash position of those two funds, you know, we ended with twenty two million dollars. Those are your flexible dollars that you could designate to something. And going forward, it looks pretty good going forward right now. So keep our fingers crossed on the lit number. I'm, I'm hoping it's just because they're. They don't have enough staff. I'm hoping that's why we don't have it. I hope it's not because they're gonna give us bad news. It'd be inconsistent to me when we hear the state is overflowing with revenues for their, for their fund balance. And if they come to us and tell us our list down, that'll be, that'd be inconsistent with what they're saying.
Well, you know what they're gonna do is tell us to give the hundred and twenty five dollars back.
Well, that could be. Yeah. The last thing I want to talk about is tax rates, page twenty three. Twenty two's budget came out absolutely perfect. That was not, so you know, when we, when we built it last year. We literally came out to the mill with no tax rate increase. That was by design. And so that's where we ended up. And you can see how we sized that bond going forward. For no rate increase, but that again is based on just the five percent. So I am speculating at this point, if we get these higher numbers in, we're gonna see actually a rate decrease in twenty three. So that's all I have for you this evening. It's kind of just a precursor to, to what we might be seeing. For the budget process. Again, inflation, everybody's battling inflation, right? I mean, you're limited on your revenues. But you are in a strong cash position to weather a downturn. Anything else?
Good. The local Franklin before you go, it's cheaper there.
Is it?
Saw it at four thirty nine on the way.
I was down in Paoli on Thursday last week and it was pretty late down there, I filled up down there.
Four oh nine at Walmart.
I heard there's a big rush at Costco, Costco's not been raising their prices, so, but the lines are long.
Thank you, Mike.